I want to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting of the city, for the city of Columbia Heights, for Monday, November 25th, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Biskins?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Mershen?
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki?
Here.
Mayor Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you.
And tonight's invocation is going to be provided by Father James Peterson from Immaculate Conception Catholic Church in Columbia Heights.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Donna, council members, fellow residents of Columbia Heights. Great to be here with you once again in this special week. We'll pray in the name of the Father, and in the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks and praise. As the temperatures are falling outside, we know that your grace continues to lift us up. We ask that you would continue to send forth a flurry of your mercy upon us. Help us in this week to stay warm in your love and to share that with others. Be with the good people here of the council as they continue to work for peace and justice. Be with us in this meeting and throughout this week and be with those traveling. We make all of these prayers through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. If you are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to read our mission statement. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a physically responsible manner. Next item is approval of the agenda. We do have three items. We're going to change the first. On the agenda that was passed out, there are two letter Bs under the consent agenda. The first one, we're going to pull, the one regarding the Anoka County HRA. We're going to pull that one and move that into the public hearings. Just for, because we have to read three motions. And then, under public hearings, we're removing two of the rental properties. They have come into compliance. So, item A at the reservoir property and item C, the Washington Street property. We're going to be removing those. So, with those, if there are no other changes in the agenda, can I have a motion to approve as amended?
A and C are approved?
Are, are...
They're pulled?
They're pulled.
Okay. Except for A and C, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve as amended, second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda, item A, approval of the minutes of the city council. The city council meeting of November 12th and the city council work session of November 4th. Item B has been pulled. Item C is the second reading of ordinance number 1657, and that's an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property by the city of Columbia Heights to the city of Columbia Heights Economic Development Authority. That's for the Northeast Business Center property. Item D is approving a professional services agreement between the city of Columbia Heights and Northwest Associated Consultants. That's for planning services. Item E is approval of the business license applications that are included in your packet. Item F is consideration of approval of the attached list of rental housing applications, again, in your packet. And item G is a review of the bills totaling $956,179.91.
Okay. If there are no questions from the council, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and take up that first item? Approve the voluntary cost-sharing agreement for Anoka County Economic Development and approve resolution number 2019-93 requesting funds from the Anoka County HRA. And, Aaron, do you want to come up and give us a little explanation on that one?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Aaron Sherbrick, Community Development Specialist. Sorry for the mishap on the agenda this evening and the willingness to take a look at inserting a new item for your review. So, as part of our agreement with Anoka County's Economic Development Agency, ACRED, we had entered into a memorandum of understanding with the county and all of the other cities within the county to participate by cost-sharing a portion of that economic development agency's budget annually. And we entered into a five-year agreement last year, in 2018, for that program. And staff was under the impression that that five-year commitment, that we would look at renewing it and that we had signed on for five years. We found out from the, and that was the second item that we'll discuss, the payment. But we had found out from the county today that rather they would like us to renew or affirm our voluntary cost-sharing component of that on an annual basis. So, we have a two-part deal, which would be the first reaffirming, again, a commitment that we already signed on for five years to participate in the cost-sharing. And essentially what that accounts to is that they look at our population, which is slightly over 20,000 residents, as you know, and we pay .057 cents per resident, or just about six cents per resident annually, for them to essentially market the region from an economic development perspective. The county as a whole participate in various real estate seminars and summits, maintain a website, a listing of available properties in the county, including the city of Columbia Heights, a variety of services. And that's what our cost-sharing component contributes to, is providing that group of services. So, that is it in a nutshell. Two separate actions, a motion to approve the voluntary cost-sharing agreement with Anoka County, which would have us agreeing to the six cents per resident, once again, which is just under $1,200. And then the second would be a resolution to approve or allocate those resources and pay the invoice that has already been submitted by the county. And the funding stream that we used to pay that is actually our HRA levy for economic development activities. So, we, in 2017, agreed to participate in an additional levy that the county administers on our behalf, as well as other cities in the county. And that's where we would draw these funds from. So, we have the resources, we have the commitment. It's more of a technicality, if you will, that we do renew this every year, so.
So, I do have a question. Since the funds and the third motion are to requesting funds from the Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, do we need to have the HRA meet to approve this?
No. So, that is, Madam Mayor, that's the Anoka County's HRA. So, yeah. That is the, essentially, the levy that they, again, collect on our behalf and we elected to participate in. And they administer that fund. So, each time that we go to utilize any of those resources that they hold for us, we have to pass a resolution authorizing access to those funds. Ultimately, they get to determine whether or not they will qualify these expenses, but we have certainly checked with them, and this is an eligible expense. It was that fund that had paid for the 2019 cost-sharing agreement for the services with Anoka County Regional Economic Development. So, it gets confusing. The agency is Anoka County Regional Economic Development, and the fund that we use is provided by their HRA on our behalf, so.
Okay. And then one other, well, actually, two questions. I just want to verify this is, we have four years left now on this agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how did they come up with how many residents since the census doesn't happen until March or April?
Yeah. Good question, Madam Mayor. They use last year's numbers. So, the same population base that we had in 2019 for the first voluntary cost-sharing agreement. That might be part of the rationale for affirming this component of the agreement each year, because they might look to adjust population. However, I don't know that they plan on that.
Does anybody else have any questions for Aaron? All right. Then, somebody want to read the first motion, please? The one in red?
Move to approve the voluntary cost-sharing agreement for Anoka County Economic Development by and between the county of Anoka and the city of Columbia Heights.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins and second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I did make a mistake. This is now under public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make any comments regarding this? Need to ask that. Is there anybody from the public? All right. Then I need a motion to waive the reading.
Move to waive the reading, resolution number 2019-93. There being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then the final motion, please?
Move to approve resolution number 2019-93. A resolution requesting funds from the Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority to support economic development activities within the city of Columbia Heights.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, items, the original item A and C have been removed. So, looking at item B. Consideration of revocation of the license to operate a rental unit within the city of Columbia Heights is requested against the rental property at 4240 Jefferson Street Northeast for failure to meet the requirements of the Residential Maintenance Code. Dan, you're on.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Really don't have much to add to your packets there. The findings, in fact, basically, they had several items that they didn't bring into compliance. And so, they're here for you, in front of you today, so.
Does anybody have any questions regarding this property? Was this one that you were called back to today to look at?
No. That's the second one.
So, can I have, is there anybody from the public here regarding 4240 Jefferson Street Northeast that would like to speak or have any questions or comments regarding this property? Anybody here for 4240 Jefferson Street? Then I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins to close and waive the reading of resolution. And second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then I need a second motion.
Move to adopt resolution number 2019-90, being a resolution of the city council of the city of Columbia Heights approving revocation pursuant to City Code, Chapter 5A, Article 4, Section 5A, Point 408A of the rental license listed.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, the last one on this section is item D. Consideration of revocation of the license to operate a rental unit within the city of Columbia Heights is requested against the rental property at 4556 and 4558 Fillmore Street Northeast for failure to meet the requirements of the Residential Maintenance Codes. Dan, did you have any comments regarding this one?
This is the one that we also inspected today. They wanted us to come out and check it again, and it's still not in compliance. The workmanship on the window repairs doesn't meet requirements of the code.
Okay. And the repairs were just a re-glazing of windows?
There was basically re-glazing and repainting of the windows. And there's obviously some rotted wood in there that they did not replace. And so, they've had...
Anybody from the council have any questions or comments regarding this property?
Yeah, I do. Does he know the consequences of this? Because he was here.
They're fully aware.
He didn't show. That's a shock.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions regarding this property?
I was out there today with them when they did the inspection. And, yeah, there was nothing done that, from what the pictures were, the first two times they were out there till this time, it wasn't scraped. The paint just looked like it was just slopped on there, and it wasn't even, it was just a terrible, terrible, it was just a touch-up job, terrible fix. So, I agree with Dan that it should be, and the fire department, that it should be pulled.
All right. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody from the public wishing to make comments regarding 4556 and 4558 Fillmore Street? Anybody here would like to make any comments or questions? Anybody? All right. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing, waive the reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then the second one, could you read that one?
Move to adopt resolution number 2019-92, being a resolution of the city council of the city of Columbia Heights approving revocation pursuant to City Code, Chapter 5A, Article 4, Section 5A, Point 408A of the rental license listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. There are no items under number nine. And moving on to number 10, report of the city council. So, Councilmember Biskins, you have been busy.
Busy last week. Prior to that, I was sick for quite a while, so I didn't get to the money things. So, the first thing, first thing I did was wrap, I helped Heights Next in their Blooming Sunshine Garden Committee. We wrapped our new trees that we have in the garden. We've got probably, I think, at least 10 new fruit trees that we planted. So, we wrapped them up to keep them from, apparently, when the freeze and melt can affect the bark on the young saplings. So, we got that set up. And then last week, I got the honor, the council let me attend National League of Cities Conference in San Antonio, Texas. And I tell you, it was so cool. 4,000 people showed up from all over the country. Council members, mayors, a few city managers, and it was spectacular. It was so interesting to meet people from all over the country that are doing the same type of work as our council and city are doing and to hear a lot of their stories and to share ours. It was just so cool. I just loved it. One of the things, I attended many sessions. I'm not going to go through all of them tonight. I just, one of the ones that I wanted to highlight, and I'll highlight more as time goes on, as things come up. They talked about emotional infrastructure. And there was a speaker on our first general session that talked about things that we don't often consider when we're redeveloping. And the way he phrased it is, he asked people, what's your favorite place? Where in the city, or where do you have fun in the city? And it's something to think about. You know, I thought about it, it was my backyard. But the garden, Mershen, is a fun place that I've done a lot of events at. So, to ask residents, where have you had fun in the city? Where does it stick out? Or what's your best memory of the city? So, when you're designing things, you're not only thinking of the hard brick-and-mortar design, you're also thinking of things that can produce positive feelings in people, like art, places where people can play, event gathering spaces where people love to gather. I went to, and then got stuck, in a place called the Pearl District. And they had apartments all the way around, one old historic hotel. And they had this small parklet that maybe, probably 20 feet longer than this room. And there was a few eateries around, and people were just lounging, hanging out, walking their dogs. There was a local that was singing, that was doing quite well. And it was a simple park. They had turf, so you didn't have to mow it. And it's a place where people could relax, enjoy the sunshine. So, those type of places to think about when we're doing redevelopment, what things can bring out positive or memorable feelings that people can grow up with in the city. So, I thought it was a real new concept. I'd never heard of emotional infrastructure before. So, that's what I'll share with you tonight. And I'm back, and I really enjoyed it. And I encourage other council members to attend next year if they can, because St. Louis Park had all but one of their council members there. Burnsville had all of their council members there, including their mayor. And it's well worth your time. I said the money for the price you pay is very well worth it. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, are we going to discuss this snow thing and this parking tonight? Because we probably need, the chief is here, and we can probably talk about this. Because this letter from Delicious Super is, we've got a snowfall coming, and they suspended it. I guess I didn't understand that they suspended that, no parking, even on less than three inches.
Okay. It's actually not on the agenda, but maybe you could give, since there is snow coming tomorrow night, maybe you should do a little flirt?
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, even, we do, we do have, there is a permit process, and for some people, they are allowed permits based on certain criteria. But even when there, but when there is a snow event, those permits are null and void. So, they still have to remove those vehicles from the streets so that Public Works can get out and plow the streets and get the snow removal taken care of as quickly as possible. So, in that particular case, even though the person was issued a permit, if it's going to be three and a half inches of snow or more, then the cars have to be off the street.
This has been a rule for a long time. She's thinking it's an antiquated thing, but it's really not. We've had, as long as I've been in the council, we've had parking restrictions in the winter.
Yeah. I think it goes back, I think we, I remember Councilmember Mershen and I talked about this when he first started, in fact, with Public Works, I think, dealt with it, early late 70s, I believe?
70s, early 80s. Late 70s, early 80s. And we changed it.
And so, it's been around for a while. And for the most part, I have to give credit to the Public Works Department, especially like at last year. We had, that was quite an anomaly last year, at least I hope it was. And they did a fantastic job. And that's really our goal with the two-to-six parking, is to support Public Works in their snow removal to keep the streets clear so that we can get emergency services around the city.
Well, you're going to have a meeting tomorrow night on this very issue?
No.
No, we're not going to have a meeting on it. I don't, we don't have any meetings for the parking, for the two-to-six parking plan anytime soon.
You're talking about, before I want to ask, you said there was a meeting coming up?
No, there was nothing on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. So, they addressed this to the council, I see. And it's something we, it's been, it's not, she's thinking it's antiquated, but it's been a policy we've had for years.
Yeah.
At three inches, you suspended that one.
Yes. I believe her thoughts are that it needs to be revisited. At this point, I believe that, in speaking with Public Works Director, that the way, the way the snow removal and the two-to-six AM parking is in place now seems to work pretty well, for the most part. There is no, there is no perfect, you know, two-to-six parking or overnight parking for snow events. I'll tell you that. But I do think, for the most part, we do try to work with the citizens as best that we can. But at the end of the day, we have to make sure that we get the vehicles off the streets so that Public Works can do their job and do it as quickly as possible.
Well, she's, she's in the hot box, because she's a renter. And she's talking about how much rental we have and not enough parking. But that's been an issue for a long time in our city.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you all.
Councilwoman Mershen?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
And I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nowitzki?
All right. Over the weekend, I was able to attend the wrestling event at Mershen Hall that the Lions put on twice a year. Very well attended, probably the most kids that we've seen this time that was there. So, good show. And we actually have a steel cage match coming up on February 22nd now. And yes, that will be in Mershen Hall. It will barely fit, but we've done it before and we're...
What is it? Sorry.
A steel cage match.
Steel cage boxing?
Wrestling.
Wrestling? Wrestling?
Yeah. It'll be our second steel cage match there. And then, we also have, the Lions are putting on their first Santa breakfast. It's all-you-can-eat waffles with Dad's Belgian Waffles. It's Saturday, September 15th, from 9:00 to noon. And part of the deal this year is that all of the ticket proceeds will be going to the shop with the cop program that our officers put on so we can help some families in the community. December. Yep, December 15th. So, and one thing, Bobby, this council, actually, wasn't it just last year that we looked at the parking and we decided, so just be, I mean, it was put in place a while ago, but just so we're clear, because I'm sure there's many out there that are watching this, we have looked at it and decided that it was worth keeping. So, just wanted to make that clear to the residents.
All right. Thank you. I wanted to say I have completed the annual review for our police chief, and he passed with flying colors. And appreciate all he does in leading the team there. He's got a great bunch that, exemplary, exemplary staff that you have. And great leader. Thank you for all you do. And a reminder to our council, we do have to do something similar for our city manager soon. So, plan on that for December sometime. So, we'll have to do an annual review. And today, I got to be, join the Kiwanis at Elsie's Bowling for their annual turkey shoot, which involves no guns. But had a lot of fun. They have Northeast Kiwanis puts, hosts it every year. And it's a great fundraiser. They raised also some money for Salvation Army. But it, you're, it's just, you, they had, they gave away probably almost 30 turkeys. So, it was, hopefully, I mean, some to somebody who was even single. So, I don't know what he's going to do with it. But hopefully, they find places to give, to give it to. But also, we had a chance to sit down with a company called Streetlight and discuss our vision. I think most of the council got to talk to them. And talk about our vision for what we would like to see on Central Avenue. And are we done with that?
They are coming back, not to do more interviews, but they're going to be attending the business council meeting, and they're working on some projects in the area.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, great. And I will let you have your turn then. Go ahead. And then Jim afterwards.
Not a lot, just with the holiday this week. The refuse collection is pushed back a day. Also, it's the last week of yard waste pickup. And like you mentioned, the snow coming, we will look forward to our Public Works taking care of our streets. And with that, the street sweeping, once there's enough pack on the roads, they'll discontinue sweeping for the season as well.
Just quick clarification. They'll still be picking up the yard waste carts, so anything that's in the carts for the organic?
I believe so.
Right? It's the bags and the...
It's the bags and the...
Okay. Okay. It's like, hmm, okay.
It goes every other week. The carts are picked up every other week in the winter.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nowitzki.
Thanks.
That's all.
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. At this point, it's a community forum. Individuals may address the city council about any item not included on the regular agenda. Speakers are requested to come to the podium, sign their name and address on the form for the council secretary's record, and limit their comments to five minutes. Tonight, instead of giving it to the secretary, we'll ask you to give it to the chief. And if there are, council will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if needed, request staff to follow up or direct the matter to be added to an upcoming agenda. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items raised at the community forum at the meeting in which they are raised. And I know KT Jacobs has, would like to speak.
Actually, it's, I'm not going to speak about what you think. KT Jacobs, 4104 Monroe. The snow topic came up this evening, and a lot of the chatter out there in the community is about not having driveway access. And my question is, and I know you can't answer it this evening, but my question is, how many properties, or is there a way that we can find out how many properties in this community do not have a driveway that would prevent them from having a place to park? Is there some way that that can be researched? What I hear is that there are not that many. But I don't know if that's, in fact, true.
Historically, I don't know of any, but you two might know better.
As far as the, how many properties have no, no type of driveway? I don't know the answer to that. I, it's a small number. I will tell you that that would be an example of a consideration that we would have when a person... of a consideration that we would have when a person applies for a parking permit. And in a situation like that, I'm sure that they would be, they would be able to get one for the, for the winter months.
Yeah, thank you. And I ask because a lot of the conversation out there in social media and a lot of the complaint is, you know, they're confusing that, well, I don't like parking in my driveway with I don't have a driveway. And understandably, if you don't have a driveway, it's a problem for you. But I, my sense was that there were not many residences that that would be an issue for them. And I think that might need some clarification somewhere along the line with that policy.
Could I ask a clarifying question on this one?
Sure.
Do they have, not have a driveway because they haven't rented space for?
Well, you hear comments that they, you know, that I don't, I'm not, I don't like parking off the alley, or I don't use my driveway, or I have a roommate, and now they have to take off time from work to go get the policy, to go get the permit, because it has to be done during regular business hours, which is a fairly well-established routine, I think, in any community you live in. The other thing that comes up is whether they, whether we can go to a, no parking on one side of the street. I don't see where that would eliminate the need in the, in the snow issues. You're still going to have to get those, you're either going to have to come back and do a double pass on that particular street if you have parking on one side, while they move from one side or the other, or, you know, same issues that we've had in the past that created the need to start looking at this more, more actively. So, I just wanted to get that out there, and for my own information, understand that my sense is correct, that there's a very, very small amount of properties that would not have the ability to park off-street. And it's something that we all have to do. It's part of being in the community. It's part of being a community, is to be considerate of what needs to be done for the whole. It's not meant to marginalize anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come and speak? Anybody else? All right, then can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.